Voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, would then look for a motion to approve the full agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, that takes us to item number twenty-four on the council agenda under special presentations. And first, we will hear a Norfolk Public Transportation Funding Request. And introducing that will be Steve Varamis, our City Public Works Director. Good evening, Steve.
Take me just a second to get connected. Or more. Okay, I'm, I am up.
Don't have anything here yet, Steve.
Well, it looks like I'm coming up on maybe one screen.
Which one are you hooked through, Steve? Are you on the right one or in the middle? There we go.
I'm on.
There we go.
I'm up, that needs to go to HDMI one.
Oh, shoot.
It's Eliel. I'm up on my screen, but my screen is not showing. I'm probably set up for multiple screens, just didn't get it down to one. I'm not sure how to get it down to one, but. Are you ready for this to be? Yep.
There we go.
There we go, there we go. We just had, I didn't know we were here. Mayor and council tonight and other members of city staff and public that's in attendance for this, for this particular topic. I'm not here tonight to really present to you as your public works director or city engineer. I'm here as a city representative to the Norfolk Public Transportation System. Specifically, I'm the president for the Board of Directors for Norfolk Public Transportation. And I've been at that role now for just about three years. What we're going to talk about tonight is a million dollar ask to the city to help us expand our system, to bring in what's called a flex route system, which is essentially fixed route. We call it flex route because it has an ability to flex within each cycle of the system. As we start to look at bringing on new services, there's quite a bit of staff that goes along with providing a fixed route system. Several vehicles that we'll need to bring on as well. Maintenance activities are going to increase for us, and so we're going to need a facility to help support the fixed route system or flex route system, as well as help expand us, give us the infrastructure we need to expand within the general northeast region. I thought I'd start with just a very quick background of who we are. Again, we are Norfolk Public Transportation. We are a nonprofit organization. What you have in front of you right now is our Board of Directors. And you'll see that in general, our Board of Directors is made up of other service-oriented businesses that service a fairly large area here around, around Norfolk. For the most part, we all came on board in late 2018, early 2019. Just a little history here. Again, we are a private nonprofit founded in nineteen seventy-two as community concern of Norfolk. Originally, we did business as the Handy Bus. We moved away from the Handy Bus as a function of federal transportation funding and just terminology that they preferred to use as we became Norfolk Public Transportation. We've serviced around twenty-five thousand single rides, single one-way rides a year, primarily to the seniors and individuals with disabilities within the community. Our funding has historically been fifty-three eleven grants. We get that through, it's routed through the Department of Transportation. It's, it's a Federal Transit Authority dollars. And those are still today the majority of the dollars that we get. In addition to that, we are funded locally. Our local match is city in Norfolk. And we get other local match from the United Way program. And then some of the dollars that we generate in revenues, we also use for local match. Starting back in twenty eighteen, we, we made some goals to reestablish ourselves as Demand Response Transit Service. Demand response means that rides that we provide are scheduled at least the day ahead, and they can be scheduled as far in advance as three, four months in advance. But generally, by twenty-four hours in advance, we mean at least noon the day before to get onto our system. We started a conversation with the State Mobility Management Team about the same time about Flex Route. Scotts Bluff had just, was just in the process of being, bringing Flex Route onboard. It was very successful. And so we wanted to go down that path and have that conversation with, with the Department of Transportation and have been engaged in that since then. The other thing we did then was to look at some of our, our outer city areas that we serve. In twenty, up to twenty seventeen, we only served about a three-mile radius around Norfolk. At that time, early twenty eighteen, we expanded that to a thirty-mile radius and incorporated a much larger, a much larger footprint of service. These next two or three slides point out a little bit of who we provide service to. We do, we do track this information as a function of scheduling the ride. You can see here a couple of things I'd point out on the education or youth side, maybe, maybe the youth, oops. This is the purpose. Next slide will be, yeah. Here we're tracking what, why we're giving people a ride. You can see here, education, fifteen hundred and eighty-four rides, fairly substantial portion of our total ridership. I'd also like to point out the employment side. About twenty-five percent of the rides that we do are, are for employment purpose. So we're, we're getting people from home to the, to their job and from the job back home. There we go. I skipped over this one. This is the people that we're giving rides to. On this slide, I wanted to point out the youth ridership at fourteen hundred, fourteen hundred. What's important about that, that's about thirty percent of our ridership. And it's that ridership that as they grow up and become adults and become workers, if we can get them used to riding public transportation today, they're going to be more likely to ride public transportation as they become an adult and look for that opportunity, whether they're living here in Norfolk, Madison County, or some other city or community. When they get used to that, they tend to carry that with them. This last slide here is our total ridership, just looking at the April statistic there. April twenty seventeen, we were doing about twenty-three hundred rides. Today, we're doing forty-five hundred and eleven rides, and we hit new ridership highs just about every week. So that's a sixty-four percent increase in ridership now since twenty seventeen. Oops. So that's who we have been. And now these next few slides are going to walk us through a little bit of who, who we want to become and the process we're going through today, and then we'll talk more specific about the fixed route system. So for the last year, the board's been engaged in a process of rebranding ourselves. We started with an article in the newspaper back in September of twenty nineteen, kind of asking the community to help us find a new name that might identify us more as an area transit organization. We wanted to move away from the North Fork or Norfolk specific name. And we ended up with North Fork Area Transit. We have recently changed our corporate name to Norfolk Area Transit. And we hired a local marketing firm, Creative Revolution, to help us through this process. And they're also working with us on some of the other stuff here that you're going to see relative to the Flex Route system and getting ready to roll out a large campaign around that. And both Annamies and Jody Ritchie are with us here tonight from Creative Revolution. So in addition to changing the name of our organization, we also wanted to rebrand the services that we provide. Forklift will be the name for the Flex Route system. And Telelift will be the new name for the demand response. Give us a call and we'll come pick you up. We do have another name out there for an on-demand system should we pull the trigger with on-demand, and that would be Express Lift. So let's look at the Flex Route or Fixed Route system. Sure, the Department of Transportation liked me to use Flex Route, so I'll try and use Flex Route. This process started about a year ago as well. Again, with the State Mobility Management Team, which is represented here tonight by Corinne Donahue. Corinne is a consultant with Olson Associates and has been doing an excellent job. She's part of a group of about seven people on the State Mobility Management Team, several consultants, including the Department of Transportation. And they've done a great job. It started with two or three public input sessions. We gathered some stakeholders within the community. We did the statistical analysis of where, where are our rides coming from and where are our rides going to? Based on that information, we pulled together some maps, laid out some routes. I think we had about three routes originally that we looked at. We kind of morphed those into this, this route here. We would bring this out with a thirty-minute service interval on the, on the peak hour times, and then we'd go down to a sixty-minute cycle on the off-hour times. The system would run twelve hours a day, seven to seven is what we're anticipating right now. As we get closer to rolling it out, there's, there'll be opportunities to tweak that to maximize our ridership if we need to pull that a half-hour, hour one way or the other. Just a little bit of a sneak peek at some of the stuff we got coming up. Changing our, changing our website, getting information ready to push out to the public, getting some. We have a, each route has roughly thirty-two, thirty-three bus stops, so about just under a hundred bus stops citywide. Not all of them will be covered, but there will be areas that we will prefer to have a covered bus stop. Getting the signs out, kind of starting to brand Forklift, working with our, our staff to get them dressed up appropriately to start representing the new service. Here's the timeline that we are basically on. We're at summer twenty-one, right, twenty-twenty-one. So we're, we're finalizing the operational plans for the system. We're having a conversation about capital to fund the system tonight. And we've got some, some organizational plans to get in place to roll the system out. We would anticipate the bus stops moving forward this fall to get those in place. And then we are in some conversations about whether we would be able to go live January of, of twenty-twenty-two. Again, depending on conversations around the funding, some fleet availability. If we were to purchase new fleet, that would probably push us out into July of next year for go-live, July twenty-two. So somewhere between January twenty-two and July twenty-two. In addition, like I mentioned, to support a system rollout like this, we're going to need another facility or a new facility. Currently, we are located over at, on Fourth Street, just south of the Senior Center. Those are pictures of our existing facility. They're in that little box with the four pictures. The bottom two pictures are of the Pompka Facility up on the northwest corner of town. The other picture there is Carney's Facility that was built in twenty thirteen. That's about a twenty-seven thousand square foot facility. And that's kind of the model that we're looking at. But we would need to get through a needs, a needs assessment, need study first. We've just selected Wilkins out of Carney as our A E. They do a lot of work at the Community College. They've been engaged in a couple of big projects here in the community on the, on the financial side. So they're here quite a bit. They've done some good work for their existing clients, and we think they'll do a good job for us. Proposed funding, we're asking, asking the city to assist us with the million dollars in funding. What this slide is showing is that six hundred and seventy-five thousand of that would be local match for the transit facility, and seventy-five thousand would be local match for startup costs on Flex Route and on-demand. Total project cost for the facility is six point five million. And total startup cost for the Flex Route and on-demand system would be about one point four million. That's roughly eighty percent federal dollars and twenty percent local match to get that up and running, provide that service and create those jobs locally. Ongoing operations. As part of the million-dollar ask, it's, it's seven hundred and fifty for the startup costs. This slide here represents one year of operation expenses. So we'd be asking for two years of operation expenses at a hundred and twenty-five thousand each year, and that gets us to the full million-dollar ask. You can see here in addition, we're going to be having a conversation with the county tomorrow morning at their county commission meeting. And then again, looking at our, our United Way Support Medicaid funding that we get in through, through our fees, to kind of fill the hole. Big overview of our funding, we're about fifty-seven percent federal grants, seventeen percent state grants, seventeen percent is local match, and just under ten percent is generated in revenue. So with that, I'm going to open it up to questions. Before I, before I do that, though, relative to this slide, thirty-eight percent of our ridership probably falls into one of these three categories. These are some comments from our Board of Directors out of Faith Regional, Liberty Center, and Bright Horizons have provided these comments. So as you read through those, I'll open it up for questions.
I, I do have a question for you, Steve. Ed, you mentioned that you're kind of expanding from three miles to thirty miles. And I noticed on that revenue screen, you're, you have an income there from Madison County. Thirty miles, would that possibly bring any revenue in from Stanton County, Pierce County?
It, it would, but our growth has to start somewhere. We can't grow necessarily all counties at one time. However, certainly as we start to identify what works for this area and what works without, you know, in the outer population of Madison County, being able to have those conversations with, with other counties would certainly be a natural progression of that. But we see our, we, we see the conversation as starting locally and kind of work with some of the other transit providers that are in some of the other communities in, in Madison County, and then also work with representation to figure out what are some of the outer county needs and then how do we service those.
Steve, what would you say to those folks that might think this interferes with private business?
We try to stay away from the private business aspect of the service we provide. You know, we recognize that from an on-demand perspective, the, probably the biggest provider of that's going to be your local taxi company. We do work with the local taxi company. If somebody wants a ride during an off-hour, an hour that we're not in operation, we have a coupon where they can get a discounted ride through the local taxi for that. But we're, we're, you know, from that perspective, we're cognizant of that portion of the business industry that, that may be in competition. We try and avoid that. We work, we work through the Department of Transportation with those conversations. We also don't provide, oh, some, you know, some of the, somebody wants to hire a bus just to take you somewhere. We don't do that type of service.
And what hours would you be looking at?
The Flex Route system would be operations seven days a week, seven to seven is what we're looking at right now. But again, we have an ability to tweak those hours to, to maximize getting people to work or school or wherever they're trying to get to.
The current facility that's right over here off Fourth Street, how old is that facility?
That facility was built by the Senior Center, and I'm, I don't know, Jeannie Dorneman's here. Jeannie, is that ten years old?
About ten. They've always been using it for.
So about ten years old. That was privately funded. It was not, there weren't F T A dollars associated with that.
Senior Center still own that?
Senior Center still owns that.
Okay, right. And I'm getting to the end of the list.
Okay.
How long does the federal match last?
The federal match, I'm going to ask Corinne, but here's what I would say about the federal match. The federal match is not in jeopardy. We see public transportation growing in the future, not shrinking. I think it's, you know, as, as population centers move towards, towards the larger cities, out of the counties, as just general transportation costs get higher and higher and higher, people are going to move towards that public transportation alternative. So we don't, we don't see it in jeopardy. The D O T would tell us it's not in jeopardy. I, I asked, specifically asked that question. I've been involved with public transportation like this since two thousand, actually nineteen ninety-seven. And I've only seen it grow and strengthen over that timeframe.
Federal government has in the past had a little issue with unfunded state mandates. You know, they'll, and it, it's a question worth pondering, I think. You know, what, so what would happen if, if, if that whole alignment changed drastically? What would happen to the structure?
The facility would be.
Not the structure, just the whole thing.
Well, we would have to cut back service, you know, to, to make, to make the dollars available work. I don't, I don't see them shutting, shutting the spigot. If anything, they might, they might crank it down a little bit. Maybe we go from eighty percent funding to, or that, that was fifty-eight percent funding to fifty-five or fifty, and, and the local matches would increase. But if that happens, it would happen, I think, slowly over a period of time. The facility itself, since that is constructed primarily with federal dollars, is a federal transit facility. We operate it for them. Whatever ground it would go on that we would purchase would be their ground as well. We have had some conversations, specifically with Northeast, about the potential to put it up there. If, if we were to identify a site up there and put it up there somewhere, it would be a lease. The land would be leased from Northeast for a period of fifty years.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Steve, can you talk just a little bit about the impetus of this effort and how it got started? In fact, it was, I believe, state D O T that came to us. State D O T who administers the federal funding for public transit to say that there were some reforms needed in making our existing public transit system more accessible to people in the community. And so that this process was born forth from that. Is, is that accurate?
Yes, that's an accurate statement, Mayor. You know, like I say, they, they want this to happen. They want these dollars to get out to the communities for transportation purposes. They know that they can administer themselves, and so they work through a local organization like ours to make that happen. Within the letter that I provided to you, I indicated, you know, we'd prefer the funding in one, two, or three segments. It could be in four segments as well. If it was to come in twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, that would certainly work for us. Any other questions?
And we've looked at the potential of utilizing some federal, whether it's CARES Act or American Rescue Plan, funding for initial capital to get this started. Is that plausible from your analysis?
It is. You know, there are, there are, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff within that act that we're actively monitoring with our partnerships at the D O T. We've been in contact with the Federal Transit Authority about the project, and they're very supportive of the project here in Norfolk. There are certainly conversations that we would want to engage in as, as we remove that forward to try and maximize our ability to use those dollars for, for match against federal funds.
All right. Any further questions?
Is there, is there any projections as far as future growth on it? And how much revenue it will generate? Will it be self-sustaining or will the taxpayers still be?
It, it'll never become self-sustaining. Is there growth? Absolutely. You know, right now, we project this year, we're going to hit somewhere in the forty-three to forty-five thousand people with rides. In a community of this size and a region of this general population and business makeup, models would tell us there's probably a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand rides a year. And so we have a long ways to go to get there. In terms of how, how they fund us, any, any fee that we, we, it could become self-sustainable, but we would have to collect a fee that covered a hundred percent of the cost. And that's counteractive generally to the populations that we're trying to serve and just the, the economics behind public transportation and making it accessible to everybody in the community. But whatever our cost is, if, if our cost is a, you know, let's just say our cost is a dollar a ride or whatever that cost is, we're capturing right now about ten percent or ten cents on the dollar. The equation that happens when we, when we submit for funding is they take our revenue out of our total operational costs, and then all the calculations are done from there. So you never eliminate the local cost. Local match is there until maybe in theory you would reach neutrality between cost and fees. Just a little bit on that, since twenty eighteen, our, our cost per ride at that time was running around fifteen. It fluctuated probably fourteen to fifteen dollars in a, per one, per one-way trip. Most recently, with a lot of the changes we've implemented, including the dispatch software, that ride is now, last month, was down to eight dollars and ten cents a one-way ride. So fairly substantial cost reduction that we've been able to achieve.
That cost per ride, would you say was, has come down to eight dollars?
Yeah, a little over eight dollars.
Okay.
Last month.
And how was, how'd you figure that? I mean, you, you figured, you told the cost of operations divided by the number of rides, right?
Yep.
What was your total cost of operations?
Last month.
Or last year or last month, whatever.
I don't have the exact number for you, but our cost of operations is probably running, we budget right around a half a million, plus or minus right in that area. We don't. Plus or minus right in that area. We don't spend that. I mean, normally we're coming in under that, probably $4.50-ish or a quarter.
When you say $8 a ride, what is the rider's share of that?
So one of the things we implemented here about a year ago was we've lowered our re, our, our per-ride fees. We've implemented monthly passes and then for youth in the community, we've implemented a summer pass. And so it's hard to tell you exactly what that ride is costing. We also have the ability to implement no cost for rides. And as a function of this system, as a function of, you know, the, the funding that the city and provides or may provide, we would be looking to offer the FlexRout system at no cost to our youth.
Steve, Norfolk Public Schools currently offers very limited busing for students, right? It does, has no comprehensive busing system for students.
Within city limits, there's no interbusing to school.
Which is unusual for a school system that large. But part of the reason you've seen increased ridership is students, families taking advantage of public transit for rides to school.
We started to market them about a year ago and actually came, went live with a, you know, offering rides to school-aged children to school in the mornings. And I, I don't have the numbers here right in front of me, but somewhere around 1,400 rides a month now we're providing to school-aged children.
Your dispatch is able to keep up with that?
Yeah.
Apparently.
I know. It's a, most recently, as a function of that software that we've implemented, we've been really working hard to get that stuff tweaked down. And so we've seen our fleet on the street reduced by almost 40%. And that's really, you know, we're, it's within the system. Some people may be on the bus for another 10 minutes or so as a function of that, that tweaking that we've done. But again, it's, you know, if, if we're not conscious of our operational cost and conscious of that per-ride trip, we're going to, we're going to work ourselves right out of business.
Anything else? Right. Thank you, Steve. Okay, if that is it for the public transit funding request presentation, we will move forward to item number 25. A proclamation recognizing June 19th, 2021 as Celebrate Juneteenth Day. I will read the proclamation. Proclamation reads, declaring June 19th, 2021 as Celebrate Juneteenth Day in the City of Norfolk, whereas on January 1st, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, setting in motion the end of slavery in the U.S. And whereas the Civil War ended with the surrender of the Confederacy on April 9th, 1865, restoring the Union of the United States. And whereas for the two and a half years following the Emancipation Proclamation, widespread slavery continued in Texas and across the Southern U.S. And whereas General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston Bay, announcing on June 19th, 1865, the people of Texas are informed that, in accordance with a proclamation from the Executive of the United States, all slaves are free. And whereas the date June 19th became widely known as Juneteenth and has been declared a state holiday in several states and now a national holiday, a day to commemorate African-American freedom and to celebrate successes gained through education, greater opportunity and achievement. And whereas celebration of Juneteenth reminds each of us of the precious promises of freedom, equality, and opportunity which are at the core of the American dream and is a day for people of all races, religions, and backgrounds to join together, pause and reflect, listen and learn, and commit to lasting and significant societal improvement. Now therefore, I, Josh Moaning, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, on behalf of the community, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2021 as Celebrate Juneteenth Day in the City of Norfolk and urge all citizens to join together in this celebration. And I believe to receive the proclamation, here tonight, we have Tamira Folk, who helped organize a community Juneteenth celebration over the weekend. Tamira. Would you like to take a minute to say something about the Juneteenth?
Wanted to say that as well, African-American population was set free as a war tactic. It obviously worked. Uh, I would like to thank Ms. Opal Lee of Texas or Ms. Juneteenth for the boots-on-the-ground work that she has done over the past 20 years. She's even collected 1 million votes, 1 million, excuse me, signatures to advocate for making Juneteenth a national holiday. And although we appreciate the symbolism of making Juneteenth a national holiday, there are things in the House or in the Congress that we need passed to advocate for the rights of African-Americans in the United States, such as H.R. 1, the For the People Act, which is passed the House and is ready to go to Senate. H.R. 40 for reparations. The George Floyd Act. We need to re-form, we need to end qualified immunity. The John Lewis Voting Rights Act. The Anti-Lenting Act, which has been in the Congress since the late 1800s, after 1860s. So we need that passed. We need critical race theory taught, and that is taught at a college level. It is not taught in K through 12. This is college-level education. It is not. And to dispel the myths about critical race theory, it is not taught in the elementary schools or the high schools. It is a college-level course. We need to end the voter suppression laws enacted in states like Texas and Georgia and Georgia. They're prohibiting people from bringing water to people standing in line. First of all, why are people standing in line for hours in order to place their vote? And why is it now illegal to give people water or food when they're waiting in line for hours? And we have one video where the voting line was shut down before 8 o'clock and people were banging on the door in order to place their vote. Things like that. Gen 40 should not be happening in the year 2021. We, that's a list of eight items. That is a list of eight items that we need to make America free and the liberty, have liberty for all enacted in the United States. So there are eight items that we wanted instead of Juneteenth. But we got Juneteenth. But we need something more meaningful and significant, like all of these laws passed to, to make sure America is free for black people and other people of color. Thank you.
Thank you, Tamira. We will now move to the public hearings and related action portion of the council agenda. Item number 26, I will open this public hearing to receive a report on findings and suggestions from the Economic Development Citizen Advisory Review Committee as required by State Statute Section 18-2715. And to kick off discussion on this, we'll hear from Randy Gates, our City Finance Officer.
Yes, Your Honor. The citizens of Vermont, the City of Norfolk, Citizens Advisory Review Committee, or CARC, are Sunday morning, Brandon Day, Aaron Hotten, Jan Heinzpar, and Kathy Means. I serve as an ex officio non-voting member of the CARC. As you stated, state statutes require the CARC. And the CARC is required to meet once every six months and report to the City Council its findings and suggestions at a public hearing called for that purpose. The CARC met on June 2nd, 2021, and the CARC's report, which includes the CARC's review checklist, is included in the agenda packet. The CARC, when they met, reviewed the current funding of the City's Economic Development Fund. Revenues and expenditures were as expected. The Economic Development Fund had property tax and related motor vehicle prorate and move tax are being collected and expenditures during very consistent payments for site consultation and normal debt service. As of April 3rd, the Economic Development Fund had $664,578, most of which will be used for debt service on the, the last debt service payment on the LB840 bond. A little over a quarter million dollars available to fund future projects. At this meeting, Candace Alder provided an update on the Rural Business Development Grant Revolving Loan Fund. The match for this program was to be from the LB840 program. $75,000 was to come from USDA and $75,000 from the LB840 program. Because of that, the applicants for the program had to meet the requirements of both the USDA program and the LB840 program. And that was somewhat cumbersome and the applicants, the potential applicants we had for that were able to secure funding elsewhere. And because of this, the city decided to end the revolving loan fund program and de-obligate the funds from USDA and remove restrictions on the city's $75,000 grant match. The committee also considered changing the LB840, the city's LB840 plan to add qualifying business. Legislature's amended statutes for LB840 plans several times since the city's program passed over 10 years ago, including adding filming as a qualified business. About a filming company approached us, interested in possibly filming a production in Norfolk. And we discussed this with the Citizens Advisory Review Committee. And one of the advisory review committee members made a suggestion that we not only add filming, but other changes the legislature's made over the years since our LB840 program was passed, which would include workforce housing. The Citizens Advisory Review Committee voted to add filming and workforce housing and any other business the legislature had provided for since our plan was passed. All the members voted no, except for Aaron Hotten, who had concerns about the filming being a temporary production of jobs and not a permanent production of jobs. And he voted no on that, but the motion carried 4 to 1. The Candace also provided an economic development update. We indicated that we've had a busy year in economic development with 11 requests for information received so far this year. And two businesses have closed on lots, Rapper Business Park, and two additional businesses have expressed an interest. The City of Norfolk is also working with the Greater Norfolk Economic Development Foundation on development opportunities at Fourth Street and Norfolk Avenue. The CARC report is included in the agenda packet. And the CARC found that the city's economic development program is operating in compliance with the budget and voter-approved economic development plan. As I mentioned earlier, they recommend amending the LB840 plan to add qualifying business, to add qualifying businesses as approved by the legislature since the city's LB840 plan was approved, which includes film production and workforce housing. Previously added retail when we were working with USDA on that revolving loan fund program that ultimately wasn't successful. Closing agenda packet is the CARC review checklist for the June 21 meeting. If you had answered any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Randy. Any questions? This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment on the topic can do so now. Okay. Hearing no one. I'll move to close the hearing and move to item number 27. And open this public hearing to consider a blighted and substandard declaration for the area referred to as the West Highway 275 Phase 2 redevelopment area. And to kick off the discussion with some background, I'll turn to Andy Colvin, our City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll ask, would you just like me to give a summary, a little bit of how blighted and substandard studies work and?
Right. And then, I believe, the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District is here. And then, yeah, they can give their summary. And then we'll move into the public hearing.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'll try to go through and give as brief a summary as I can to help people understand how a blighted and substandard study works, as well as a TIF process in Nebraska, because essentially that's what this all boils down to. Prior to any consideration of tax increment financing, you have to do what's called a study that's to study the area for blighted and substandard to have it declared as such. Now, that's in the state constitution of Nebraska. It's also in state laws that govern that process for that. So to make it simple, it's kind of like a pre, pre-application or pre-qualification. It doesn't approve anything in and of itself, but it kind of sets a playing field for having development take place or redevelopment. In the city, historically, we have done this, at least in my time here, larger sections of land that we have identified that go along with our comprehensive plan, go along with our future growth area, looking at our future infrastructure needs and expansion capabilities. And so we try to align those with, with our blighted and substandard areas. And we have done some studies of existing parts of town that are more in our core. So it really depends. And it's a very vast, a very broad range of factors that can play in to what makes something blighted and substandard. What comes to mind normally would be bad buildings and, you know, ugly things and things that look terrible, but that's not always the case. That's, that's a part of it. But that's not always the case. You might not always find that on a property that's been declared blighted and substandard. It's also challenges with topography, infrastructure, any number of things that, that can make particular parcels of ground more difficult or challenging to, to redevelop. And so just some of the ones that come to mind that the city has done, kind of preemptively, so to speak, would have been the current West 275 blighted area that was initiated by the city and studied by the city. We've done the Riverside Boulevard, the East 275 corridor. And those three are some of the major ones that I can think of since I've been here. I know the city's done some others in the past as well that are also larger areas. And I'll, so, and the green over there on the far right is another one that was done, but I think that was done several years ago, which also posed a lot of challenges for redevelopment in that area. So it's been, it's been used to incentivize residential, commercial, industrial, a whole wide range of uses that are allowed in state law. So what we have tonight is a blight study. And that has kind of expanded into a phase two of our existing West 275 blight study. So another one the city has initiated and asked the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District to, to do that. This in and of itself, I would say, is the first step towards redevelopment. You can't have any redevelopment. You can't have a discussion about tax increment financing or anything until it's first declared blighted and substandard. And to do that, you got to have a study, which is what we have in the agenda tonight. It by itself does not do anything. The study is really just a declaration the city makes. It does not affect property values. It doesn't affect zoning. It doesn't affect taxes. Nothing like that. The use of the land does not change with a blighted and substandard area. It's simply an area that is studied and then the council is asked to determine whether or not it meets that criteria to be declared blighted and substandard. And after, also reviewed by the planning commission that also sees that. From that point on, a project could apply for tax increment financing. But that is a completely separate process that has its own application form. It has its own review. It has its own hearings, which is an extremely long process for that, I will say. And in Nebraska, the process is designed to be very long and open and transparent. So this is, is really a study. It's looking at an area similar to areas that we've done in many times in the communities you can see on the map and the wall. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. And I'll hand it over to the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District to go through their study and findings.
Thank you, Andy. I just wanted to have background presented on blight study and process. And now I would like to ask to come forward Jan Merrill and Tom Higginbotham from the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District to present the study.
Thank you, Your Honor. Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District was asked to perform a blighted and substandard study on what was called the West Highway 275 Phase 2. We determined through using the Nebraska Community Development Law, which identifies six- six substandard factors, review of the Madison County Assessor's Office, their property data, and site inspection, that the area concluded that there was four substandard factors. The first one is dilapidated and deteriorated properties. There's nineteen structures out of the twenty-seven that received either a four, a fair, or poor, or dilapidated finding, which is seventy point thirty-seven percent. Also, the second finding was the age. Sixteen structures had age recorded on the Madison County Assessor's website. The average age is fifty-five point eight-four years, which is sixty-eight, sixty-eight point seventy-five percent of the structures are over forty years old. And the forty years is the average, is what they're looking for. There is also the existence of conditions that endanger life and property by fire and other causes, and deterioration of the site and improvements. Those are two other factors. Determining the age of the structures, there are flammable materials, deteriorating electrical systems, faulty heating systems, various amount of overgrown vegetation, and combustible items such as propane tanks and barrels. With the Nebraska Community Development Law, there are sixteen blighted factors. We determined that the area has five blighted factors. The first one is, again, the same as the substandard, which there is nineteen of twenty-seven structures received a fair, or poor, or dilapidated determination. Again, that's seventy percent. Unsanitary and unsafe conditions. There's an overwhelming amount of debris, abandoned vehicles, propane tanks, miscellaneous areas of tall weeds growing. In addition, there's vacant and abandoned buildings, which can create unsafe, unsanitary, as well as deterior, as well as it determines there is deterioration at the site. There's one, the last factor with the blight study, with the blighted factor, is again the age. We have sent out letters to the property owners on May 17th, and we did receive two, two of the property owners did get in touch with us. We did answer their questions regarding the blight study and our conclusions.
Yeah. Great job, Jan. I'd like just to point out, too, that Andy did a great job of an overview. The cities like First Class, they can only have thirty-five percent of their footprint blighted and substandard. Currently, Norfolk has thirty-one point oh-six percent under blighted and substandard. If you accept this blight study into your system, that'll bring you up to thirty-three point seven-five percent, so you'll have about a hundred and six acres left over. Another thing I'd like to point out, too, is, you know, blight and substandard determination studies, areas do not have to be within the city limits to be included in the area, but we do have to include that in your total percentage, so. And then, as Andy mentioned in his overview, you know, as projects come to you and through the redevelopment stage and those kind of things, before they can get tax increment financing, that would have to be an extension of the city limits. But for the study purposes, the properties do not have to be in the city limits at that time, but we do have to count the acres, so. With that, will I answer any questions that you may have?
Tom, the property that's outside of the corporate limits, how far out does that go? Is that just within the extraterritorial zoning that you're able to do that study on?
I believe you can...
Within the two mile?
I believe, honestly, I'm not a hundred percent sure on how far you can go out.
I think as long as it's contiguous.
Correct.
I think you can, I think you can go beyond.
Beyond the two mile?
I'm not a thousand percent sure of that, but I'm pretty certain that is correct.
Just another couple of questions. You noted you'd sent out letters to the property owners. Is there any attempt to actually, like, knock on their door and talk to them, the ones that are out there, or? How do you know about doing that? Because you obviously have to be under their property to take photos and all of that.
No. We stay on public roads at all times. I never step on a person's property.
Just curious.
Matter of fact, I never get out of a car.
So, the property owners that responded to their property being, you know, having some issues, blighted, substandard, I guess we use legal terms, what was their reaction?
They had questions, and we answered their question.
And they were satisfied with that, the property owners?
As far as I know.
Yes, as far as I know.
With that...
I talked to the same one, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
How many different property owners included?
We had two.
Altogether, it was in the study itself?
Just one second, and I can give you that answer, Your Honor.
In the meantime, Thomas Kears, how many blighted studies would you estimate you've done on behalf of the city of Norfolk over history?
I've been at the district twenty-one years. I mean, probably ten plus in the twenty-one years I've been there. And probably a lot of those, most of those have happened within the last probably six or seven years.
And I've probably...
And Jan's probably done about a hundred and one percent of them.
Yeah. I've probably done six or seven. And I don't have exactly, there might be some duplication of ownership, but I have seven parcels that are in the blight study.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have a question. I'm going to refer to Exhibit One in closure 27. How do you come up with the map itself?
Generally, we go ahead and do the blight study according to what the city has asked us to do. Most often, you go around parcels. Very rarely do we split up a parcel unless there's some real circumstances that merit I don't pick them. I was contacted, and we was asked to do this survey.
So, with the West 275 corridor study, there's a major study done in 2016 along West 275. I understand that was nearly seven hundred acres. Looks like it runs east of Walmart to east of Divas. And you said that the studies have to be, the properties included in the studies have to be congruent, right? They have to be attached and connected.
Yes.
So, would you say not unusual that, given West 275 is a highly-traffic corridor, and you see the blighted areas throughout Norfolk currently, which is about a third of the community, is, are long, highly-traffic corridors, not unusual to extend or continue a study along a heavily-traffic corridor in a community? Fair?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
As far as, too, is going back to the question about, how do you come up with the area of the map? You know, we've been doing blight studies in Northeast Nebraska. We serve sixteen counties, eighty-some communities, and in the twenty-one years I've been there, you know, we've done a lot in our region. And that's really the local economic development folks in those communities, you know, take a look at their community, how do we want to grow? They decide if they want tax increment financing to be one of those tools in their toolbox. And then, they look at the areas that they want to grow or where there's potential growth and design those areas, and then that's, and then they hire us to do the study. So, that's typically how those boundaries come about.
And typically, those fall along the lines of a city's comprehensive plan?
Yes, yeah.
Which, in Norfolk's sake, was done, revised in 2017, and calls for the West 275 corridor to be a mixed-use commercial corridor. Any other questions?
Just one, since Frank had mentioned Exhibit One, you've got an area blocked out that's not part of the study. I'm safe to assume that's where the hotel is.
That is correct.
All right.
There's no, as far as I understand, there's no need to develop that.
It's already developed.
It's developed.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Done.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Okay. I wonder if I...
Do you want me to sign in?
Yes, please.
First of all, thank you, Councilman and Mayor, for your service. I appreciate that, and sometimes it's not real fun. Is there any chance I could get a blow-up, one talking of this map that was in the paper? It shows the exact area.
I think we have that.
Could you get it up on the screen by chance? I can't.
Is it in the packet?
It might be helpful for the audience if you could.
It's in the packet, but Val should maybe have one. Yeah, she'll get it up.
Yeah, we can work on that, John.
Impossible, one talking. Anyway, I'll try to be brief, but I'd rather be doing something else in here tonight, to be honest with you. Anyway, thank you again, and I'm very much in favor of economic development, and I think everybody in this room is smart economic development. And I think you guys all want to do the right thing, for sure. And we all want to be very respectful and calm tonight. I think, hopefully, all those councilmen and the mayor, I know the mayor did, got my email dated 16th. And can that be put in the official record, or is it already?
It is not. I didn't receive it.
Okay. Go ahead, please. Thank you. So, anyway, I want to cover a few points from that email first. Then I want to go on and cover a few facts, a few assumptions, and a couple of questions after that. From the email of the 16th, of course, I thank the councilmen and the mayor for their service. And also mention that I'm very much in favor, as well as I thank everybody in this room, of smart economic development. And personally, I'm super myself now. I'm not opposed to some blighted designation along West Highway 275. I'm out there every day, of course. And definitely, some of the areas you described, obviously qualify. At the planning commission vote, there wasn't much discussion there. There was one item I'm going to bring up later, obviously, that was not apparent to the public at the time. I'm not sure who all got the letters. I talked to a lot of people in this room. Were it just adjacent people, who got the letters? You know? How far out?
Property owners within the blight study itself.
Oh, just right there. So, very limited number of people, not the adjacent people.
The ones whose properties were affected directly.
Well, the ones adjacent are going to be affected by whatever development's in there.
The properties involved in the study analysis, right?
Right. I know a lot of times zoning changes, anybody within so many feet gets a letter or something, but...
Says in the zoning change, though, sir.
Right. I understand. Yep. Okay. Anyway, so, going on, really, your vote, to me, okay, we got it up, thank you. So, to me, personally, I don't have any problem with anything except for the rectangle, the north rectangle. I know that's maybe one parcel, but that parcel happens to be the north property line of what Ho-Chunk just bought, which was not disclosed publicly until some citizens brought it up, and it was just disclosed publicly last week. So, it seems to be a little bit of a coincidence that the line matches what they just bought. So, that's one point. Okay. So, I'm going to ask a couple of times for the council to table this and have some calm discussion with citizens about revising the map. Again, I don't have a problem, and I think the majority of citizens would not have a problem with everything else up there. To me, that goes a long ways north, further north than what it needs to be. That's prime vacant farm ground, and it just sold for a big premium. So, here's a couple of facts. Ho-Chunk paid over three million dollars to get the constitutional amendment passed. They are the main lobbyists, the main supporters of the constitutional amendment. And Nebraskans voted for it, without a doubt. Madison County people voted for it. But I'm not sure if they voted myself, and a lot of people thought that there was going to be six throughout the state. Apparently, it's unlimited. Somebody correct me on that if that's not true. All you have to do is put in a racetrack and race one day a year, I believe, and then you're legal. So, I'm not sure if the people of Madison County would have voted for it if they would have known there was going to have one right in Norfolk. So, Ho-Chunk just paid over one point three million dollars for this parcel, over seventeen thousand dollars an acre. I don't think they bought it to farm it. They obviously have plans for it. I'm not sure when they contacted the city, when the city was aware of this, but this is not the best optics or PR for the city. And I understand the process, that there's going to be a lot more hearings like this and so forth before it would ever happen. But Ho-Chunk, I'm sure will come in with all the fancy economic reports about all the extra revenue for the city, all the extra new jobs, so forth and so on, tax relief, on, on, and on. I know we're not voting for Ho-Chunk tonight, but that is a factor, especially on that rectangle. So, to me, one way of really saying you're listening to the citizens is table this for a couple of weeks, let's at least talk about it, and then come back in two weeks if you really want to vote for it, and include all of Ho-Chunk's one point three million dollar parcel and call it blighted, seventeen thousand dollar an acre ground blighted, then that's up to you. So, just, again, the timing and manner of this just doesn't sit very well with a lot of people. So, again, I'm very much in favor of economic development. This Ho-Chunk deal just, I'll guarantee you, if there's real to the room, somebody's house that was up in that area probably just went down in value by twenty percent. The north property line goes up, if you guys haven't been out there, go for Drive, that's South Deer Run Drive. There's some, it goes right up to their backyards, and there's some people here. Nobody wants stuff in their backyard, not my backyard, I understand that totally. But if it gets to that point, we can talk about it, but surely, there's a less controversial place out in the open along a highway somewhere to discuss having the casino there. I'll guarantee you, Ho-Chunk is going to come out guns ablaze in to get this done. There's no way they would invest that much money without it. So, with that, I'd be open to some questions, I guess.
Okay. Thank you, John. Questions?
Mr. Dinkle, do you own any of the parcels?
I live on North, I live on North Deer Run Drive.
The question, do you own any of the parcels that are blighted?
Oh, no.
Okay, thank you.
Nope, certainly don't. I'm just a concerned citizen about doing what's right. I live in North Deer Run, so candidly, where I live probably wouldn't be affected a lot because I'd be insulated, but, I mean, casinos run into the night, they have lights, big parking lots, I mean, surely, there's got to be a better place than this with a casino. I understand the divots and all that stuff, but...
And, John, I just want to clarify, and I know you understand this, too, because you mentioned it, but tonight, what is in front of us is the blight study. So, we've, as a city, not received any application of any kind from any entity relative to redevelopment of that property to this time, whether through a TIF application, or a zoning change request, or anything else. So, anything that may or may not develop at this point is speculation, and we have a process that was initiated in early March. I understand that the property transaction happens late April, and this is not an unusual or uncommon practice for the city to extend its existing blight areas for purposes of potential redevelopment. So, I guess the point I want to make is, that is the issue at hand before us tonight. Anything beyond that, we don't have a reason or excuse to talk about because we've not received any application for it.
But if somebody's going to pay one point three million for the ground, it's pretty obvious that the train is leaving the station to have a casino there.
Which is also their right under the principles of free enterprise.
Sure it is.
And private market.
Yeah, it's your right to amend the blighted map, too. So, it'll be very simple to do. That's a long ways from a highway to be blighted.
John, I just got a, I guess, an observation question...
But we talked a little bit earlier about how we wouldn't necessarily cut a parcel or hadn't cut parcels. And that's where we would end up doing, in what your thought or idea is. And that's, not saying that's impossible, but by every stretch of the imagination, that still wouldn't necessarily stop a casino. It would stop the ability for TIF in that area.
Yeah, right, I agree.
And this has nothing to do with casino, but if they would happen to come, they'd have to apply for rezoning anyway. Which, obviously, everybody here would have a voice in that. And if I'm thinking correctly, they would also probably get letters within that area of that rezoning. Am I thinking, what's the distance in that, and would Deer Run?
It would be within, anyone within 300 feet of the property line that's asking for the rezoning.
300 feet, so it might not meet John Dinkle's house, but it would meet everybody that would be along that.
Sure. Yeah, it'd probably go about halfway through those southern lines.
So, just thinking out loud here is, I don't know that by changing that, it would really affect what a possible builder would do, other than they could not possibly apply for TIF. And that's, that, again, has to come in front of everybody to vote on, a planning commission and ourselves as city council. But it wouldn't necessarily stop them applying. It would for that area, if we didn't do that in the north. But they could still apply and possibly get or not get that TIF south of there.
It would just send a clear message to Ho-Chunk and to the public in this room.
Any other questions for John?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I'm in favor of smart economic development. Heck, I've been in action council and everything, so...
I realize that.
Get some stuff going, so.
Yes, sir. So, it's a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now.
I got a question.
Sure.
Since he was talking about, why didn't we, why wasn't parcel 590151029 included? Tom, if you can answer that, or... Be it in the north, yeah, wherever that mouse cursor thing is going right now. Just curious why that wasn't included in the study, that's all.
Were you asking me?
I'm asking somebody.
Oh.
If somebody could answer it, it'd be great. All right, thank you.
I can answer that, councilman.
All right, thank you.
So, consistently, what, when we, as a staff, have identified areas for a blight study, the comment was made about cutting parcels, that makes it very difficult, very difficult for legal descriptions when you do that. And I think we've consistently not wanted to do that either with zoning either, that we make people change their whole properties so that we can have consistent... So, we did that on East 275. We made sure we went up and grabbed other parcels, or the entire parcel, so that we wouldn't be cutting them in half, just because it is, it's a legal nightmare, and it's a lot of work for that. So, that's part of that. And then, for the other parcel, we looked at a corridor, and, again, we tried to find the lines. And that was an easy line, and it clearly described parcel that could not be included. And it would have also brought us even closer to our limit as well. So, for a number of reasons, to be consistent, we went up and gathered the partial parcels and then continued the line across.
Because those parcels are kind of odd shaped.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that number is 100 acres. We're currently, if the study's approved, we're less than 100 acres away from the limit, correct?
106.
106, okay. John, if you do, you'd have to come back up to the podium, please.
Do we know roughly how many acres were in that rectangle? 20, 30? I'm just saying, if you're bumping up against your limit, I'm guessing there's probably going to be some more area that you want to declare blighted eventually in Norfolk. And that would give you more room for more blighted acres elsewhere, if you would cut back that 20 or 30 or 40 acres, whatever it is. So, that was one point I wanted to make. So, I'd hate to see a run out on a truly blighted area versus farm ground that just sold for $17,000 an acre, is my point. Thank you.
My name's Mark Hall. I live in Ward Two. I grew up in this community in the 60s and 70s and came back in 2000. And so, I've seen lots of changes in the city since I left, and most of those are good. I'd just like to see how this train is moving. It's moving very fast. I know that the city, from a TIF standpoint, does not necessarily need property tax to support the revenue stream that they use to operate on a day-to-day basis because they have a lot of sales tax revenue that is generated. However, there's significantly larger groups that have tax revenue that's dependent on property tax and subsequent to any discussions related to TIF. Those folks would likely not receive funds for 10 years. Now, with the latest changes to state statute, it could be 15 years. So, although the city may be able to weather without property tax revenue, other tax entities may not. Since I've moved back, the change in culture is changing. There was no liquor sales on Sundays. That was changed. Obviously, it increased sales tax revenue on Sundays for the city. More recently, we had Keno. A lot of those dollars initially, five years, went to City Rec. But it started another change in our culture. With this latest purchase and with the state approval of racetrack and gambling in the state, we're on a road to see more change in our culture. If it's right that only 7% of this 240 acres is blighted, then I don't understand what we're trying to do for redevelopment. If it's only the 7%, then something's wrong. Ag does not need redevelopment. It may need development, but not redevelopment. So, years ago, the city taxpayers spent a lot of money in developing economic development. They bought a beefpacking facility into town. We upgraded our sewer system, and we have overcapacity. And whatever economic development is done in the city can easily be satisfied with that overproduction of wastewater. So, that's a good thing. We do have capacity to increase economic development. I agree with Mr. Dinkle that this area that we're talking about doesn't need redevelopment. It needs development. And I think we're not using the blighted and substandard appropriately for only 7% or a little better. We're taking advantage of state statute and impacting taxpayers because if we postpone tax collection for 15 years, it puts more pressure on the existing taxpayers in the community. So, I think John Dinkle summed up a lot of my comments earlier. I'd rather see a corporation into the city, a zoning change, before I ever saw a blighted and substandard designation, personally. I think we need some additional discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I would clarify, just on the TIF process. Again, tonight, we are exploring the issue of extending a blighted area in the community and approving or not a blight study. But I do want to clarify that if TIF is initiated on a property, it doesn't mean property taxes aren't paid on that property, the basis of that property tax is still paid during that period.
The investment is not paid. So, when they put in water sewers and streets...
Which otherwise, if it were sitting the way it is anyway, there's no change, correct?
Somebody has to make an investment. Is it going to be the current citizens or the developer? When you do TIF, the current citizens are footing the bill because the developer is paying the bonds for that development versus those dollars going into the tax entities that are associated with that property.
All right. Well, I just wanted to get a clarification about the TIF process. And it has, again, been used in recent years for developments like Fountain Point Medical Clinic, Bradford Business Park, almost any housing development that you're seeing in construction around Norfolk right now, which was bare ground. So, if there, I guess there's a consistency argument to make if you said that none of those should have been eligible for TIF either. But the fact of the matter is, communities like ours and rural communities are using one of the few incentive tools that are available to us to help grow the community.
At the expense of existing taxpayers.
I don't agree with that assessment, but thank you for your opinion.
You generate tax revenue from that, but the existing property taxes have to pay more versus the developers and the people that purchase those properties.
So, it's a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to make comment can do so now.
Hello. My name is Julie Dearing, and I own...
Julie, can we have you sign in, please?
I own some of the property that they want to blight. And the pictures that I seen on your website, they have one building of mine listed on that. And if she had looked further to the north, I have a garage that I put up last fall. I'm in the process of taking that old building down. And this farm, my husband's ancestors homesteaded, and I really want them to take my property off of this blight and substandard map. I was never approached by anybody. It says in the letter that we received that a community may not consider declaring an area substandard or blighted until a developer comes to the city council with a proposed TIF project. Nobody has approached me about buying my property to put a development on it. So, I don't know who did. I'm assuming it was the 75 acres behind the event center. And so, I just would like to have my property taken out of that.
Julie, which property is yours by the parcel number?
Mine is number 590147188.
Thank you.
It's not, it doesn't include where the station is, the one over to the right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Any other testimony?
Okay, Mayor Morning, Council. Brett Jackson. I'm actually a homeowner, but just north of the area that you're talking about blighting. And I understand your role. I do appreciate what you're trying to do for the economic development. But I do agree with the gentleman that just spoke, and also Mr. Dinkle, that there's a lot of valid comments and questions that still are out there on this. As I said, we are a homeowner just north of there. And I guess the first question I have is, is how can we have prime Nebraska ag land that's being blighted? I mean, I understand that there's some areas, I mean, there's areas that have been homesteaded and things like that that should not be included in this area to be blighted. And certainly, prime Nebraska ag land should not be included. So, I would really question on how that is part of this study. And I would ask, I think that John had talked about having this table. I think it's a very valid comment to get more public opinion and discussion on what we plan to do with this area. The other thing, I guess, I would really, and I know that you mentioned that we can't discuss what's coming in there, but I don't think that there's, it's completely clear on what the plans are for this area. But if there was Ho-Chunk, I guess the question I have is, you said that there would be further zoning hearings and things like that, is can they claim sovereign immunity from zoning?
No.
They cannot?
No.
Okay. I just want to make sure. I know that this is a process...
I understand that Ho-Chunk is a business corporation.
Okay, and they cannot claim sovereign immunity?
No, this is not tribal land.
I would ask that you consider tabling this discussion and the vote until we have a chance to review this. I'm not even sure all the area or the buildings were included, but I think it's a reasonable request.
Any questions for Brett? Thank you. Any other testimony?
Hey, Tom. I keep hearing the term blighted used. The farmland would fall more under substandard, is that correct? Tom?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
Well, when we look at an area...
Tom, can we have you come forward, please?
When we look at an area, we look at the area as a whole, not each individual parcel, property in the area. Which is why, when we look at, you know, the criteria of age, it's the average age, not every single building or property, commercial, residential, has to be that age. It's the property as a whole is looked at. That meets the criteria.
So, when you hear the term substandard, that means it could have lack of infrastructure, could have issues as far as drainage, like you said earlier?
Yes.
So, it's not just blighted?
Well, we got to look at the blighted and the substandard.
Right.
Criteria, both, yeah. And when Jan went through that, we have to meet certain ones, and then if you meet certain ones, then you look at the other ones.
But if you hear about farmland, that would probably fall more under the substandard than...
I think it's the area as a whole meets those, is the definition, if that makes sense.
And just to be clear, those terms were not invented by us. This is not local editorial commentary. These are terms defined in Nebraska state law.
Yes, and yes, that is the actual terms in the state statute. And, you know, over the years, you know, lots of communities have been using tax increment financing to spur development in their community for growth. And the 21 years I've been here, I mean, that's always been a discussion. It's, you know, it's not an inviting terminology for what our communities are trying to do by future development, so...
Yeah, you guys did it. You did it to my house, just a...
I did blight your house.
Just a couple of years ago.
Actually, Jan did.
No, I did.
Still losing sleep over it.
Your house is blighted, that's right.
Tom, I do have, just to clarify, and again, the reason it does extend north is because both of those properties do extend down to the highway.
Right, right. So, it's contiguous.
Right.
Yep.
And you didn't want to break up a parcel?
We don't recommend it. I mean, yeah, I mean, you know, when we're working with, you know, our local governments, you know, when they're designing the areas, you know, you follow the lines.
Well, it clarifies why it went up there.
Right.
Tom, since you're up here, I'm going to add a question, but because it got brought up a couple of times here of the sale or private sale of that land.
Yes.
And you got acquired or asked to do the study, obviously, before that private sale. I can say personally, I didn't even know happened either. It's not something they come to the city and ask, they buy land. But looking at that and not necessarily knowing how you guys do your blight and substandard study, do you look at property values or recent sales of property? Does that go into any of your...
No, no, no. And actually, when we did this study, we, I mean, we, the city approached us early March about, you know, doing this project. You know, and actually, you know, I think we went under actual contract to do the study at the first... at the first part of April. And when we polled, what we do is we poll the properties to look at them, to see, you know, who owns them, what's, you know, if there's any ages listed of structures so that we can, you know, send our letters out. And Jan can correct me if I'm wrong, but thinking back, you know, the Ho-Chunk was not the owner of that property when we, when we did this study back in-
That is correct, because I have the GIS that we use.
When we printed it off, so.
And Tom, as far as farmland and blight studies, again, not uncommon with recent blight studies that need it as done for the city. Looking back again at the first West 275-
Right.
Study.
Yeah.
That has seen development of what was farmland into, whether it be a medical clinic or a business park or housing development.
So when somebody's property is designated as blighted, substandard, is that going to have an effect, you know, if they wanted to sell that property?
Well, actually-
Like its original purpose, I look at the mayor here, it said his own house. I'm two blocks from the one.
This, you know, you know, like, like the mayor said at the beginning and Andy and at the very intro, the designation really doesn't negatively, other than the name, and we all agree the name stinks. But, you know, the, the individual properties that are within here, it, on the, just because it's blighted and substandard determination is made, it doesn't negatively affect the value or positively affect the value unless you want to look at it as, hey, I own a piece of property in here, I might have it, you know, there might be an extra incentive to sell because, you know, maybe somebody is going to come in and look at this area and go, you know what, I'd love to do something. You know, I need some tax increment financing to help my project get along, otherwise it's not going to happen. You know, I might look at this property. And I've done the, you know, blighted substandard presentations to many communities within our 16 counties, and, you know, a lot of them take a different approach. You know, they, they understand that it's an economic development tool, and if somebody comes to them saying, hey, I want to do X in your community, let's take a look at it. And some of our other communities, like I said earlier tonight, you know, have looked at their community and said, you know what, we think this area could be blighted and substandard, this area, this area, and this area. And they don't have any projects on the hopper. Nobody's approached them. It's just they want to be ahead of the game, that they don't have to go through the long public process if somebody does come to them. I mean, you know, you can do it either way. And I think, you know, that's what, I don't want to put words in Andy's mouth, but I think that's what, what he said at the beginning is, you know, Norfolk over the years has, you know, done the cop plan, you've done a annexation study, you know, you're looking at growing, and this is just another tool to assist with development.
Thanks, Tom.
And typically, Tom, one more question. A county assessor would typically have no way of knowing unless they actively looked for it whether a property was considered blighted or substandard, correct?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, they're going to, they're going to find out if a project gets started, you know, and, and the business starts pulling, you know-
Right, sure.
Building permits and improvements and does those kinds of things.
Okay. Thank you.
Thomas Gilsett, little short question. My only last minute question is with Julie's declaration, public declaration tonight, so does that affect it? Can you still declare it blighted when this property owner says they don't want it?
Yes, I don't think that there's any-
There's no effect on that?
Legal barrier from doing so.
So she was not contacted then?
She, I saw the letter she had in her hand, yes.
Okay. So even though she doesn't want it, you can still do it? Okay. That's my question. Thank you.
Is it a public hearing? Anyone else wishing to make commentary?
I just want to make sure. If we're going to blight the area, and we're only-
Can you state your name again, Brett?
Brett Jackson. If we're going to blight the area and it's only convenient to do it just because it's a single parcel, don't do the easy way. If you need to divide it, divide it, it can be done. The properties north of there should have a buffer between whatever is developed there. And if we can divide that area and blight whatever you want to blight, that's fine. But don't take the easy route. Okay?
Brett, I just got a question, Brett.
Yeah, I had one.
Like I, like I noted before, that it isn't necessar, what, what could, that wouldn't necessarily stop a development. And for sure, a business should have some sort of barrier between residential and, and there's no doubt about it, and I think it's in our, it's in our-
It's in our-
-home that that has to happen. So I believe that, that should. Now, what's, compared to what you guys have for a view out that way, you know, what that barrier looks like, God only knows at this point. But doing, doing that, what you're saying, I wouldn't say it's necessarily the easy route, but it, it really wouldn't, it really wouldn't necessarily stop a developer, like what I was noting before. If all it's doing is stopping them for the possibility of TIF. And in that same note, all of us here and the entire community has the, has the right to come right here and, and speak in favor of opposition, whether they should get TIF or whether they should be rezoned to build whatever they want to build. And that's where we make those, those difficult decisions, whether we want to allow it to happen or not, obviously. But, but this, I, I mean, I can totally understand a landowner coming up here and, and saying her concerns, no doubt, but this doesn't necessarily stop any future development that we don't even know about. I mean, other than we know, obviously, in public, that Ho-Chunk bought a-
No, I understand.
Piece of land for a heck of a lot of money.
I understand that.
Ungodly money.
I understand that. But it is a step for a step for TIF, and that area should not be blighted. Farm, farm ground should not be a blighted area.
That begs the question, it, and we're not even talking zoning tonight, but the future, if, if a developer, whether, whether we vote to vote, put this as eligible for TIF or not, the developer or ag, there's a lot of things that can go in ag that are pretty unpleasant also, just so you're aware of that.
But when I bought that property, I knew that was ag.
But what I mean is that the landowner doesn't just have to do crops, he can do livestock.
But it has to be rezoned. It didn't have to be livestock. I grew up on a farm. I know what that's about.
It's ag. But you're okay, you're, so you're okay with that?
I understand that. It's an ag property.
Just want you to make sure you know that.
Ag isn't just farming, I agree.
Oh, no. Just so you know that, that's all.
I understand that.
That's all. Thank you. Well, I think it maybe should also be noted, and I'll have to go back and look up some things, but I think Fountain Point, Legacy Bend, Bradford Business Park, probably Victory Village, all of those were ag prior to going into those particular developments, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
No matter what zone out there, there will be some sort of buffer, right? We have industrial-
Maybe, maybe it's a good time to explain the process of if there should be any redevelopment proposal, and it would require a zoning change, what that looks like. Val Grimes, our city planner.
Yes, thank you. The zone change, if a application comes into us, we request the applicant to get an abstractor, give us names and addresses within 300 feet of the boundary, and then we send out courtesy letters to those people for planning commission. The property will be posted with a sign by state statute, and also the public notice will be put in the newspaper 10 days prior to the, the public hearing at planning commission, and then again at city council. Planning commission gives a recommendation, and then it moves on to city council for another public hearing.
So multiple public hearings at both planning commission and city council. Andy, if maybe you could step through the TIF process, which is an even longer process than a zone change request, just briefly summing it up.
Sure. Well, if we get an inquiry about TIF financing, the first thing we'll do is make an applicant fill out a form that the city's prepared. It gives the general background of their project, whether or not they can, on a preliminary basis, pass the cost benefit analysis. We look at zoning, we look at all the information we need to kind of get that sent out to the different bodies to take a look at. And so that application then will go to the city council's economic development subcommittee just to, to take a preliminary review of that. And then if there's any questions or any issues, we'll, we'll try to answer those questions or get more information. And then typically, the redeveloper will have to prepare a redevelopment plan. And the city typically does not do that. There's been certain partnerships where we've had the, the public partnerships, but that's, that has not been, that's been the exception where the cities help participate in that. Generally, the redeveloper will get their attorney or legal counsel or planner that they have hired to prepare the redevelopment plan. It has to meet all the state statute requirements, and we'll look at it, we'll review it, that'll go back and forth through the city attorney, the finance officer takes a look at it, planning takes a look at it, everybody takes a look at it, goes back and forth for a long time, many times, before it even gets to advertise for a, a meeting to be accepted by the community development agency. And then the community development agency, which is also the city council, accepts the plan, and then they can send it on to the planning commission for review. And after the planning commission reviews it, it goes back to the community development agency, and from the community development agency, it goes back to the city council for a public hearing.
And how long does that usually take, start to finish?
If it's really easy, you could probably get it done in a few months, but if it's complex and involves a lot of investment, a lot of infrastructure, a lot of engineering, a lot of different things, it can take six months easy.
Okay. All right. We're still in public hearing. Anyone else, anyone new wishing to testify? Okay, hearing, no one. I will ask for a planning commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing to hear comments and review the blighted and substandard determination study for the area referred to as West Highway 275 Phase 2 redevelopment area on June 8th, 2021. The planning commission recommends approval of the declaration as blighted and substandard with an eight to zero to one vote, with Commissioner Griffith abstaining from the vote.
Okay. Thank you, Brianna. At that, I will close the hearing and move to item number 28 and look for a motion to consider. Resolution number 20, 21-23, declaring the West Highway 275 Phase 2 redevelopment area blighted and substandard.
I'll make the motion.
Motion and second. Further discussion, council?
I would, I would like to take this time to probably table this and take their thoughts into consideration. Let us think about this a little bit longer and just, and, and give the opportunity for all of us to be here. I didn't know Shane was going to be gone. I think it's best that we have a full council. There's no rush in passing this today in my thoughts. But let's, let's at least, let's at least think it over a little bit and then have full council here to, to vote on this.
Second.
Motion and second to table the issue.
Is there discussion or a question to table?
No, since there, there's no further discussion on a motion to table, the council will have to proceed then with a vote on whether or not to, right now, table the matter, or if the motion does not succeed, the underlying motion is to approve or not the blight study. So the vote right now is on a motion to table.
Voting in the affirmative. Oh, I cannot see that. Granquist, Arns, yeah, Weeble House, Muren, Jackson, Hildebrand voting in opposition. Muren, motion carries.
Hey.
Merrill, sorry. Merrill.
Got it?
Two Ms., yes.
Okay. With that, we move on to the last item on the agenda, item number 29, which is a public comment period. If anyone has any public commentary to provide at this time, they can do so now.
I cannot see it.
I live at 1707 North 13th Street, and I'm here basically to ask a question or let you know that I'm confused about these signs that have gone up around Norfolk. I'm trying to figure out what the city of Norfolk is trying to accomplish by putting these signs up. If you look at the handout that I gave you, there's a sign that says, "Over 26,000 pounds licensed ghost vehicle weight, can't go on this road." The next slide or picture is a picture of the license plate on my pickup that I drove to the meeting here tonight. And the third one is a ticket, a warning ticket that we got because we drove a truck on a route violation. I don't know what you're trying to accomplish with these, these signs or what you're doing. I read the minutes to your meetings and when, when it came up, and I understood that these signs were going to go up because people's GPS, trucks that were going across town or through town or, or not stopping here in town, were getting a GPS signal to go on Sheridan Street or, or someplace through town. And I thought that was a real good idea when, when, so I didn't come to any of your hearing or anything like that, and, and I don't like it when I'm driving a truck in a strange city and they take me down some stupid street I don't want to go on. That happens all the time. That, that is a very legitimate thing. But let me, let me discuss what's going on with these signs and what's happening in the city of Norfolk. I have a CDL license, and we have property around town, trucks, construction equipment, and, and considerable vehicles that are licensed over 26,000 pounds. I'm familiar with ghost vehicle weight, licensed vehicle weight, actual weight of the truck when you're, when you're loaded and whatever, and those kind of things. I'm familiar with bridges that are posted with a weight limit on it. I'm familiar with roads that are, that are posted with a weight limit on the road, and I understand that. I mean, if a bridge won't hold a truck, we shouldn't go across it with a truck. If, if a road has been designed for light loads and not trucks, then we don't want trucks on them. I understand that. That, that makes sense. But the, these signs, what, what's happening, one of the, what roads are we supposed to go on? The ticket that I got, we, we have a shop on Square Turn. The driver, it wasn't me, it was Liam, but came down Square Turn Boulevard, turned east on Benjamin, and I got stopped in front of the YMCA. Said, "You can't go on this road." And he called me up and said, "Well, Dan, what, what was I supposed to do?" I said, "Well, I don't know what you were supposed to do." We were going to go, go south on First Street and pick up a dozer that was down there, south on First Street. So, so first of all, I guess, how, where are we supposed to drive and what can we do? And then let me discuss some of the other things that are happening. At our office, we, we have a copy machine and we use a lot of paper, so we, we order paper from different places. It didn't come, didn't come, didn't come, and we called in, and I didn't, but they called in and says, "Well, how come, how come you're not making the delivery?" I said, "Well, we can't deliver it like we used to. We can't get a truck on Norfolk Avenue, so the truck can't, can't deliver it." So they had to take the individual boxes of paper, the, the box is about this size, and ship them individually by UPS because a, a truck can't be on Norfolk Avenue. Okay, my, my wife had a couch delivered to our house, and it came from Omaha, and it was, it came in a truck, and the guy called and says, "Well, I can't come to your house." Kind of says, "Well, you're going to come-" Kind of says, "Well, you're going to come to our house," so she went and got him, and they came. But, but, but that's what, okay. This morning, we have a driveway at our, at our house, and on our truck and top was, we get rock from Fort Calhoun, so I went up Sheridan and dumped it on the, on our driveway coming through. Okay? Am I not supposed to do that, or what are we doing here? One of the things that's, that's happening, when I come out Sheridan in the morning, I notice that Gerhold trucks are all lined up on Alaska Avenue. Okay? This, this sign is not posted on Alaska Avenue, but it's posted on Riverside up there at, at the north end of town where the light is. Okay? So you've directed, you directed all the truck traffic onto Highway eighty-one to the stop sign so that there's no, there's no light. So they, and when there's traffic in the morning, there's no light there, so all of the Gerhold trucks, or the trucks pulling out from Alaska Avenue are, are jumping out in front of traffic. I mean, I mean, that's what they have to do. Okay? And then, my pickup. Every night I go home, I turn up Sheridan, and it's, it's licensed for thirty thousand pounds because I haul a goose neck once in a while. I don't haul it home very often, but once in a while I do. So, so what are we supposed to do? And, and are you the city going to obey this? I mean, you've got a Benjamin Avenue as a declared snow route, and you're not going to put trucks on it? So, so what are we, what are we supposed to do with these signs? The way you've got it written, nobody obeys them, so it becomes one of these signs that, what do we ignore, or what do we do with them? So what are you trying to accomplish? What do you want us that, that own property in town, have trucks and that kind of stuff? What do you want us to do?
I believe the ordinance says that if you have a delivery, you can go to that area. Is that right?
Correct. So, Mayor Council, I'll attempt to address it. Councilman Granquist, would you mind handing me your copy, just so I can see what he's talking about?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, I guess the good news is, people, people are reading the signs, and where we've had some truck issues with trucks moving through the community, obviously, they're, they're seeing the signs. So, you're right, we can't, we can't necessarily put the entire ordinance on the sign so that people, you know, can read it and understand that local deliveries are what's allowed. So the sign is intended to disallow transit, or you're moving through the community from, from north to south, east to west. Dan, in your case, if you're trying to get down, down onto south first and you're up on the north end of town, yeah, we'd like you to stay on the truck routes and move south on eighty-one to two seventy-five, and then over to First Street. But anybody that's bringing product to town, the, the intent here is that they're able to deliver that. These signs are intended to really be designating where we don't want vehicles that are moving through the community. So, if you're moving, if you're bringing product into the community and you need to drop that off.
But the sign doesn't say that.
I would agree with him. The sign doesn't say that.
The sound, so, so let me, I'll back up here a little bit. So as we, as we were preparing to sign the community and get the truck route signed, we reached out to the Department of Transportation, and they reached out to, to some of their other regions beyond this region, and this was kind of what came back as, this is what's going on in another community, why don't you give that a try? And so, well, reaching out, we had some conversation about it. We thought it looked reasonable, and so we pulled the trigger on it and installed these. But I think you've provided some fantastic feedback. Obviously, there's, there's some issues here in terms of interpretation on what we're trying to do.
But a person in Kansas City or Omaha or somebody coming to Norfolk, with, with this sign posted this way and, and whatever, they don't know that they can make local deliveries with a truck that's over twenty-six thousand pounds.
Yeah.
And apparently, the police officer doesn't know that either, or, or else, I don't know what was going on there.
I think we need to look at it. I mean, it's obvious, you know, just based on your conversation here tonight, there, there seems to be a substantial issue there that deserves us looking at and finding a path through there, but.
I, I think the underlying policy intent, Dan, was to help increase traffic flow inefficiencies, make it clear where trucks could be, and try to avoid residential mixed-use commercial areas as much as we can outside of local deliveries for public safety's sake and for traffic flow's sake and all of those things. Again, you've brought up some input that maybe signage can be clarified or refined some to make, to make it, make that clearer, but the underlying policy intent was to enhance traffic flows and protect public safety.
Dan, I think you're, I think what you're telling us tonight is, is good. It's great to have this kind of input. It would have surprised me greatly had everything worked as smoothly as we would like to have it work. So, yeah, do we need, do we need to do something with it? We sure do. I don't know if it's to say local delivery's okay, or, you know, we'll, we'll have to take a look at it, but thanks for the, for the input. Don't have any advice for you on the ticket, but I'm sure there's some floating around out there.
You know, when, when we go to ship something, and you too, you, you have to put in an address of, of where, where you're going to, going to ship. I mean, all our job sites and everything else. And UPS and all of those drivers, if you don't have a legitimate address, they won't, you can't get your shipping document done. So then if this, if the shipping address comes up within an area like this, then it restricts them on the truck. So we got, we need to do something so that the big picture, I mean, the, the, those kind of, those kind of inputs are, are seeing that they can make local delivery.
Yeah. And maybe, maybe it has to say local delivery is excluded. I don't, I don't know. We'll have to, we'll have to look at it and.
I agree with you, Dan, but we also got semis that are driving up into Sherwood, into your neighborhood.
What's that?
We got semis that are driving up in your neighborhood and housing developments, and that's one of the things we're trying to eliminate.
Well, I agree, and I agree, I read that, yeah, no, I agree with that.
I live on, I'm in Ward Four, and I get complaints all the time of bull haulers going through First Street, Norfolk Avenue, it's a safety issue. That's what we were trying to accomplish with some of this. But I appreciate you coming and informing us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Hello, my name's Kenneth Porter, Cape Porter Construction. I'm here, probably say the same thing that Dan said. I will, will remind you that I've been here an awful long time. In nineteen sixty-four, I started working here. I worked for Tyson Brothers. We worked on the flood control. We did, we did all the, they did a lot of the grading or most of it on the college. And we did a lot of the roads around here. I worked there until late nineteen seventy-five and started my own company. And then I have been in and around this, this city that whole time. I did, I did jobs out of way, too, but my, my living comes from this town, and when we, when we put signs up like this, doesn't do, doesn't do good. I buy my fuel here, I buy my tires here, I buy my trucks here, I buy everything. I, I support this, this city, and of course, this city supports me, too. But when you put signs up there, my guys work all over this town. There isn't a street that we don't go down, there isn't a road we don't use. It doesn't bother me that you blocked off Norfolk Avenue. I'm fine with that. Don't have a problem. But when you block off Benjamin Avenue, that's bad. That's a four lane there, you're going to be tearing it up, and I suppose you may want trucks there, probably, huh? Suppose? Yeah. I know people don't like trucks, but when we do this, guys, you make it tough and you make us break the laws, what you do. And I hope that you can redefine this some way or another so us local people can, can make a living here.
Well stated, Kenny. Yeah, and I think the ordinance states that. It's just our signage maybe doesn't.
Hope we can work out something.
State the obvious there.
Yeah. Thank you.
My name is Mike Metica, and I'm here to put a bug in your ear. I've got a situation where my neighbor wants to put up a fence on our property line. Well, my house is one foot nine from the property line. He puts that six-foot plastic fence up, I can't step between the house to even maintain my house. He wants to put that same fence, the whole length of the property between the two garages, there's actually three foot six between the garages. Now, I know it's a little late for me. Everybody I've talked to within this city has told me it's his property, he can put it where he wants. I think somebody needs to think about some of this old parts of town where property lines aren't real distinguished, and like, when it snowed this winter, that's where the wind whips through. That's going to be a snowdrift. I've got three windows right there about ground level. That's where, I've got them all taken care of, they're not going to leak, but that's going to be a problem with the snow drifting in there. Basically, my point is, I don't care if he puts up a fence. I've tried to talk to him about giving me a little bit of leeway, but he's not going for it. So I guess my point is to all, see if y'all want to get together and decide that maybe there is some sort of ordinance or something that could benefit the next guy standing in this line, because look at me, I'm not going to go between that fence and that house at one foot nine, and I'm not going to bend down and repair my foundation every spring and every fall. And at this point, I'm going to quit, get it all done before the end of the summer, and we'll have to deal with it next year when we have the problem again. That's my point. I hope it's all well taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, if, if you would, I might suggest that you, if you haven't already, talk to Val Grimes here, our Planning and Development Director, and she's also in charge of our codes enforcement. So there may be some things that we can shed some light on in terms of what the existing ordinancees are. Yeah, I was right there in the blue.
Okay.
Yep. So after the meeting, that might be worth your time to talk about.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ah, why not?
My name is Paul Medelman. I'm here to talk about floods. The flooding, specifically the flood that happened in two thousand and ten that affected the Elkhorn River more than it did the, the flood did in two thousand and nineteen. I attended the meeting, or an open house, what, two, three weeks ago with the DNR, and I think FEMA was there, DNR, I, I think FEMA was represented, I'm not sure Valerie was there, but at any rate, I brought it up in the discussion with Katie Ringland, who's, works for the DNR out of, I think, Lincoln or Omaha, but. The, the river between Thirteenth Street, Highway eighty-one, and First Street, I own the property on the south side of the city, has the property on the north side, and in the flood, if you look on Google Maps, about halfway down, three eighths of a mile or so from Highway eighty-one, that river narrows to about a hundred and fifty feet. And when you pinch water like that, obviously, it pushes it back, and I can't help but think that if that were widened, that some of the flooding that happened in southwest Norfolk wouldn't have happened. Both bridges on, the bridges on both sides of that Highway eighty-one and First Street, I believe they're about two hundred and fifty foot wide, if not a little more, but, so if we could open that channel up through there another hundred foot wide, and approximately the flood, flood elevation is, or the flood in two thousand and ten was at seventeen point six, I believe, or something like that. But that, that's a lot of water that would get, allowed to get through that pinched area there if it were widened out, and possibly could have prevented some of the flooding at Nucor, Affiliated Foods in the southwest part of Norfolk there, I think. It was approaching the Walmart area, and it was pretty substantial. So anyway, I, I voiced my opinion there with Katie and, and Tom, their new president or their seat, yeah, president, I believe. And he, or Katie said she would bring it up with FEMA. They are currently doing the, they did the LiDAR radar, I believe, last fall, she said. So they're remapping the river from, or re, flood plain, they're redoing the flood plains, so I don't know how far they're going. Madison County, Stanton County, I think, was the, that they're doing, is that right?
They're doing the whole Upper Elkhorn watershed, which.
To Omaha?
The Upper Elkhorn is us to the west, and then the Lower Elkhorn they're also doing, which is just a little to the east of us, to the, to the farther east.
So all I'm here to do is ask the city when the FEMA, or DNR comes back to the city with their plan, that maybe that could be brought up, or brought up now, maybe, possibly even with the DNR, and see if there's some solutions that could be done on the, something similar maybe to what was done in sixties when Kenny Porter was, he ain't here anymore. Kenny Porter was working on the flood control out on the east side of town, so maybe we incorporate something on the south part of town to alleviate flooding in the southwest part of Norfolk, and help get the water through town.
Yeah, it's good input. Thank you, Paul. And I know we, the staff works on a regular occasion with both entities, FEMA and DNR, so that's good to have on the radar screen, and we'll, we'll be in discussion with them about it.
And obviously, I'm doing a development out there, and I did leave approximately fifty to a hundred feet of property that I won't put streets or water and sewer on, so potentially there'd be some room to widen the south side and the north side, so thank you.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Okay. Anyone else for public comment? I think that's it. So at this point, we are adjourned. Thank you. Good evening.